So next up, we've got Belinda Atkins. Belinda is the Sustainability and Resilience Lead at Penrith City Council. Belinda's background is in environmental management and ecotourism. Belinda is an environmental manager, sustainability educator and advocate, who has worked in the local government space for almost 20 years, with experience in water quality, integrated water management, coastal management, sustainability and resilience. Belinda leads the Penrith City Council Sustainability and Resilience Team in the development and delivery of innovative programmes for council and the community. A key focus of Belinda's role is integrating sustainability and resilience principles and outcomes into council policy, strategy and process to maximise environmental performance and to work collaborative... You know the word. To build resilience across the Penrith area. Today, Belinda is going to be focusing on addressing the challenge of urban heat. To Belinda.
Thank you, and thank you for all coming to Penrith. This event has been great so far. I'm here representing Penrith Council to talk about Cool in the City and how we can address the challenge of urban heat. So over the last few years, heat in Penrith have become synonymous. So Penrith has been labelled as the hottest place on earth twice. Once in 2018, on the 7th of January, we recorded the temperature, the highest temperature in almost 80 years. That was 47.3 degrees. And then again, on the 4th of January 2020, we recorded the highest temperature of 48.9 degrees. That was the official recorded temperature. I'll talk about other temperatures that we've recorded that were higher than that a bit later on. So we've already heard Kim talking about heat and it's a big problem. We all know that that heat is, you know, creates more deaths in Australia than any other natural hazard. And yet, it's not treated the same as other natural hazards, including bushfire and flood. In 2020, council did our climate change risk assessment process, and that showed that extreme heat and heatwaves were identified as an extreme risk for Penrith Council and a key challenge that we had to address. We know that we're hot and we're getting hotter. And temperatures are predicted to increase. There's nothing we can do about that. I've put the figure here, and this is the 2018 figure. And it clearly shows that at that time, the CSIRO and BOM predictions showed that by 2030, we would have 22 days of over 35 degrees. And this morning, you saw Sebastian has put up the most current figure, where we've reached now instead of 22 days over 35 degrees, we're looking at the high 30s by 2030. And we're almost there, we've almost achieved that. And in some instances, we've gone past that already. The other side of things, we can see there that there are stresses on the community. So heat is not only our top shock facing the community, but it also adds to other stresses. And we've just heard Kim talk all about the stresses that the community face. The most obviously compounding being health and wellbeing. We've seen during the last few years, particularly in 2020, and we also had COVID, people wanting to get out and about and outside for their mental health. But it was very difficult to do so because of the heat. We found that it's quite inequitable. People who especially don't have a car, they might not have air conditioning. They need to get to cooler spaces. But walking in order to get public transport, they just couldn't do it. So then that increased social isolation, reduced social connection. And then there's also the financial stress of it. So the financial stress of having to run your air conditioner or the inequity of not being able to afford to run your air conditioner. So there's all these stresses that are compounded by the shock of urban heat and heatwave. So what's council doing about it? To address the challenge of the urban heat, back in 2015, we developed and adopted our Cool in the City strategy. And we're the first council to have done so, to look at heat in its own right and to know we actually have to do something about this. We're traditionally, we're a service organisation, we work for the community. We need to provide the community with a livable city and community that they can, you know, thrive in. So we knew we had to do something. So the key strategies for the Cool in the City strategy, you can see them here. Mainly, it was around policy and planning and what we can do in our own space. It was around green infrastructure and water-sensitive urban design. It was around community programmes. So how do we build the capacity of the community and take them along with us? And it was around increased albedo and reflectivity. So what could we do in materials and colours to make sure it wasn't as hot around Penrith? One of the key programmes we looked at and trialled was our Community Centre, which is at Jordan Springs. It was the first one to be built in Penrith, where we looked at urban heat and cooling the city, as well as other sustainability properties. So we looked at the types of materials, we looked at passive design so that we could reduce heating and cooling. We looked at shading and we looked at lighter coloured materials for car parking and the surrounding pavements, as well as trees and shade. So it was probably one of the biggest projects we did at that time. We've since seen Cool in the City principles embedded within our council plans and other strategies that we have, including the Sport and Recs strategy. And that goes across all other departments. So we've been collaborating with other departments to consider the opportunities to work together to incorporate Cool in the City principles. So just to provide some examples of other things we've done under the Cooling the City strategy and how we've embedded the Cooling the City principles. So the first one is around the Buildings Policy. So the Buildings Policy has been around. It's related to council-owned buildings and major retrofirms of our existing buildings. We've already had it in there that obviously our buildings had to be sustainable. But in 2021, we looked at this and thought, yes, we want to be sustainable. Yes, we want to achieve five-star, Green Star rating so that we can mitigate and reduce our greenhouse gas emissions through those buildings. But what can we also do for furthering Cool in the City? So we incorporated a specific Cool in the City criteria into our Sustainable Building Design Checklist. And that included the landscaping, canopy cover, green roofs, permeable surfaces, water in the landscape, all to mitigate the urban heat island effect. The second example, people were talking about shade. And we do in fact have a shade facilities and play spaces policy that was implemented a few years ago. And it was still to provide a safer environment for the community, allowing both artificial and shade, natural shade elements, to reduce exposure to UV rays and to allow communities to still go out in hotter days and be have a comfortable environment in which to play. That policy, we've just completed a three-year programme, where we've provided shade sales over 98 play spaces, as well as providing natural tree planting. The policy looks at initially looking and designing your playground to be within locations that already have natural shade, but where they don't, looking at putting in artificial shade structures until such a point where the trees can grow enough to provide that natural shade to protect the community. So the next example you might have heard about is our Urban Heat Planning Controls Package. So this was developed and endorsed by council in May in 2022. And the LEP was gazetted in July 2022. It was a natural progression with Cool in the City to look at what we could potentially do to control development. We, the proposal included two different things. So we had the provision in the Penrith LEP 2010 to ensure mitigation of the urban heat island effect for new development. And we had the second part, which was to create a specific urban heat chapter in the DCP 2014, including controls to address urban heat, such as building design, materials, cooler colours, landscaping and optimising heating and cooling. So this has been an award-winning package, winning the PIA awards and also highly commended in the local government, Excellence in the Environment Awards. It's been recognised, you know, council's actually doing something that is within our control to address urban heat. This package, I guess, sets council's intention of what we want and our expectations of development in the future to address urban heat within Penrith. So just another round, in conjunction with the Urban Planning Controls Package, we looked at it at the same time. So whilst council has control over what we've put in the Urban Controls Package, there's other planning and developments that obviously we don't have control of and they're under the state government remit. So we thought, what could we do to actually look at the state government planning system? What changes are required? So under the Cool in the City strategy, we looked at, part of that includes advocacy. And so we put together an advocacy plan and the Cool in the City Planning for Heat Issues paper. So we came together with, we had a consultant, which is JOC Consulting, and they came together, we did interviews with our own planners, but also we involved planners from Western Sydney councils. We had a webinar, we had online survey of all industry stakeholders and brought everyone together to discuss what could potentially need to change in the state planning system and what recommendations could we put forward to advocate for those changes for better urban greening and cooling. We ended up, we had engagement with industry stakeholders. We chose priorities, we came up with these issues, recommendations. There were the two issues and five recommendations that came out of it. We had 87% support from industry stakeholders for those recommendations. So this just shows you what those two issues are and the actions. So the first one being around the greenfield subdivisions in Western Sydney, being built with minimal provision for tree canopy cover. So actions around that were about mandating tree canopy cover targets in release areas, but also ensuring that this was done at the very first master planning stage and built into that planning process. We looked at larger verge widths for street tree planting and we already heard about street design guides this morning. That was all incorporated with that. We need better design of our streets and greater width to fit these trees and larger canopy trees into these spaces. And the third one around amending the exempt and complying code to provide higher landscaped area on small blocks to at least fit one large canopy tree to provide canopy and shade and cooling for properties. The second issue was around our existing planning legislation that's managed by the state government and what could we do to, you know, address, better address urban heat within those planning legislation. So the first one was around revising basics and the National Construction Code to adequately address and consistently address urban heat, but also including up-to-date climate projections. Because as it stands, they're not up to date. It doesn't really adequately address the climate that we have now, let alone into the future. And the second one was around revising those industry guidelines and design guidelines to really embed mitigation of the urban heat island effect. So this was a really fantastic project. We got a lot of people on board. We've engaged with state government, we've sent this to the Greater Cities Commission and they're looking at it during some of their projects that they've been doing. So it's a really good advocacy piece around, you know, bringing everybody together at all levels of government to address urban heat. So talking about the heat sensor project. So throughout the years since 2015, we've been going through and implementing the Cooling the City strategy and temperatures are still getting hotter. So there was a need to do further research around what those localised summer air temperatures actually were for Penrith across the entire LGA. So we partnered with Western Sydney University and Sebastian Fauch on this study. And we did the study across the period from 14th of December 2019 to 30 March 2020. We put out 120 sensors in trees across the entire LGA and Sebastian worked out the grid for us to go and install those so that we got good readings and representation across the entire LGA through all suburbs. 10 of those specifically went into the St Mary's CBD. What we tried to do with this programme at the same time, somebody was talking this morning about mobilisation and pedestrian movement and we have cameras in St Mary's CBD. So the idea of that project was to look at movement in heat and do people still go out in a certain degree time and what could we do in that area to cool the city? And unfortunately, that didn't quite work out for us because it also aligned with the bushfires and Penrith was the, all the smoke just dropped on Penrith and so nobody went out anyway. So unfortunately, that didn't work for us. But the actual study with Sebastian provided really good results for us and good localised results that we could really use. In the end, I think we got 1.4 million individual temperature measurements that we could take into account through this project. So just some results on the project. So the data for the 1920 summer showed 39 days were recorded with air temperatures at or above 35 degrees. And if we go back to the previous 2018 figure, that was 22 days by 2030. And the new figure was something like 36 or 38 days by 2030. Our localised study has shown, we've already reached that in 2020 and we had 39 days. However, the official recording from the BOM record was only 24 days above 35 degrees. And that just shows our, our one station is at Penrith Lakes and it's not quite representative of the Penrith LGA. And it's not really showing the sufficient localised data that we need to know about what's really happening out there in Penrith during the summer months. The data showed that we had at least six locations that recorded over 50 degrees on that 4th of January 2020 day. And the highest was 52 degrees, which was recorded at Berkshire Park. This was, as Sebastian said, the highest temperature that's ever been measured in the Sydney basin. So just for the results, the study showed that obviously whilst temperatures were quite similar across the entire LGA, I think there was only one or two degrees difference between all suburbs. However, they did show some microclimates within each. So the summer air temperatures were warmer in the central and northern areas of the LGA with it being cooler in the south. So Magua was our coolest suburb that we have in the LGA. We found that night time air temperatures were warmer in suburbs that had the higher coverage of hard surfaces. And no surprise there, there were surfaces taking longer to heat up, but also longer to cool down, showing that we have the clear urban heat island effect happening in our CBD centres. St Mary's was the worst for that. The CBD was 2.4 degrees warmer than the surrounding areas overnight. And that's a bit difficult, St Mary's is one of our older suburbs. There are a lot of more vulnerable people there. So to have them, you know, suffer these night time temperatures as well is a major risk to public health. So just on this, this was a really good study for us. It gave us localised data about the LGA. It provided a good evidence base. We already knew it was hot, we knew it was getting hotter. But this data localised across all our LGAs can pinpoint for us, you know, where is, where do we have to put our effort? And the evidence base to put forward to council to say, we need to continue our effort and undertake valuable projects within various suburbs to ensure that we're cooling those suburbs. The data's been used to inform various strategies and plans that we've developed and has gone towards our planning controls as well. And we've also used it to inform direct on-the-ground projects, including our greening city, tree planting projects, which I'll talk about in a minute. So the next few slides, I'll just give some examples of how we've used this data and to inform our work. So the first example is our Resilient Penrith Action Plan. This plan was developed in 2020, throughout 2020. We went to a lot of engagement with the community. It was also done throughout COVID times, but also through the hotter periods. And the plan was endorsed by council in June 2021. And it supports building the resilience of Penrith City. You can see there, the goal is around building our capacity to understand our vulnerability, manage our risks and be prepared to respond, adapt and thrive in the face of those shocks and stresses to enhance our resilience as a council, a city and a community. So during the engagement for the Resilient Penrith Action Plan in late 2020, we went to the community, we talked about shocks and stresses and what they were facing. And the community themselves identified heatwave and urban heat as their key top shock. So in the Resilient Penrith Action Plan, you can see there again, we have a direction to live with our climate, which clearly recognises the need to address climate challenges, in particular urban heat. And Cool in the City is a huge function within this direction too. So the recommendations from the heat sensor study and the report that Sebastian put together were built into the Resilient Penrith Action Plan. The remaining initiatives on the Cool in the City strategy have been built into this plan. And also ideas and recommendations that came out of our Cool in the City Masterclass, which we held for industry professionals in 2020. All of that was also built into the Resilient Penrith Action Plan. So we knew we had everything covered and what we had to do to build that resilience and adapt to urban heat. So as part of the Resilient Penrith Action Plan, we also did some vulnerability mapping. And this was undertaken across the LGA. We developed a web-based tool and to provide a snapshot really of what Penrith's vulnerability was to shocks and stresses. So we did look at bushfire, we looked at flood and we looked at heat. So we included in there the heat vulnerability index and we also included the heat sensor work. So that included the maximum summer temperature, mean summer day temperature and mean summer night temperature data. So all of that was then input and overlaid with socio-economic data that we had for Penrith. So in here, we've got aged care facilities, we've got people aged over 65, people with English as a second language, those living alone, those with disability and those who are Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander. So we're looking at overlaying all of those things. And this information gives us a bit of a hotspot on, you know, where are the areas of concern? Again, where does council have to employ its resources? And who are the most vulnerable and where are they located? So this, this allows us to forward plan and to put some additional plans and programmes in place to really assist the community addressing urban heat and the other emergencies and challenges that we might face in Penrith. It shows there, just on the side, we, we worked out from this web tool that there are around 24,000 residents who are most vulnerable to heat. And again, that assists us in our future planning. So another example is our Green Grid Strategy. So the Green Grid Strategy was first identified as a planning priority in the local strategic planning statement. It was endorsed in 2021. And it builds on the Sydney Green Grid and identifies green infrastructure and connections between these areas throughout the LGA. The urban heat data was actively used in this process. The mapping was used to prioritise the actions that were put into the Green Grid Strategy, looking at locations of what we could do to build that green grid, but also looking at the blue and green grids together to support, you know, those corridors, the networks and to support walkability and comfort of residents as they move between the main centres, the parks and reserves, transport hubs and their residential areas. So the next one is canopy cover targets. So Penrith has a lower canopy cover target than other suburbs. Obviously, we're trying to build that and we need to. This was a recommendation to look at canopy cover targets in both the Resilient Penrith Action Plan and the Green Grid Strategy as a way of addressing urban heat and cooling the city. So in 2022, council received a Greener Neighbourhoods grant and we've engaged with Willem from the Good Canopy Company to do this work for us. So we're currently in that process and I'm sure Willem has done our organisational capacity framework and he's in the process of doing the methodology for our canopy cover targets. So yes, that's underway and we look forward to some good results and what we can do across Penrith, both public and private land, to really build that canopy cover. So the next one is our City Shaping Projects. We've got two major projects that are ongoing in the heart of Penrith CBD. The first one being City Park, which is a 7,000 square kilometre park that's replacing a current car park. It will include rain gardens, a central lawn, a green roof on the Amendies Building, shaded areas, tree canopy cover, gardens and water features and misting. So it's really about building that green heart within the city centre to provide a cool space for residents, but also businesses. We've also got Soap Place Car Park, which is also an Ashville open car park, which will be newly designed with commercial multi-use community space and multi-use car park. But it's going to be done to be greener and cooler. And we have green roofs for cades, rain gardens and community green space. We do currently have a green hoarding around that, where we've put green walls on. So we'll see, the idea of that was to see measurements, to see whether green walls and green hoardings on a construction site could reduce air pollution, as well as provide cooling and aesthetics and greening on the site while construction's being undertaken. So the last one is our on-the-ground projects. So talking about the greening our city projects funded by the state government. We've mentioned that a few times today. Yes, it is about numbers, but you know, council considers we're actually actively getting out there. We're able to plant trees on the ground to provide that cooling in neighbourhoods that actually need it. So we have three initiatives, green streets, cooling our workplaces and cooling our parklands. So green streets, we've seen almost 5,000 trees planted in streets in residential areas in six suburbs. Those suburbs were directly nominated from the heat sensor study work. They were some of the warmest suburbs across Penrith, but also older areas, areas with low tree cover and areas where there were more vulnerable residents. So that's why that areas were chosen first to undertake the street tree project. We also have the, in total, I guess, 7,500 trees have been planted across all the projects, including the workplaces and industrial estates, infrastructure corridors and parks and reserves. The industrial sites was a first for council. We haven't planted trees there before. We weren't sure how it would go going into those areas. They have less than 10 to 20% of canopy cover at the moment. They're some of the hottest areas because they have more hard space. So we first attempt and it's been quite successful and the businesses have taken it on board. We've got some case study works that we're working on with some of the businesses to promote that they're participating and supporting tree planting within, within their workplaces. Now, part of this project, trees were carefully selected by landscape architects. They looked at what species we could put in, were they, you know, local to the area? How would they survive in that location? So looking at soils, looking at space, looking at what infrastructure was there for planting to ensure the best survival and growth of the tree. There is 12 months maintenance on that by the contractor before it's handed over to council in terms of the parks. But also what we've been doing is working with the community, people who have obtained a street tree, to provide them with the know-how of how to maintain that tree going forward. So a big part of that project was the Community Engagement Programme. I think we all know the community is hard about trees. There's a lot of reasons why nobody wants trees, and the most being, you know, lawns. People love their lawns and they don't want trees, they don't want leaf drop, seed drop. It's in the way of waste removal. And so all these things and challenges about putting trees in, and that's before you even get to power lines and services and everything else. So it's a hard push to put in street trees. So we went hard with the Community Engagement Programme. We've done it before, a few years ago in St Mary's. We'd not much take up, but this time, we, we went out to those programmes. In the suburbs, we did pop-ups for community events. We did tree giveaways, we did face-to-face door-knocking letters. So we, social media, so we covered everything and tried and get everybody on board. And the one thing we did do, we, we evolved over time. So if something wasn't working, then we changed it up to engage with the community in a different way. And we tried different options. So we knew that some residents, if they really didn't want that tree, then vandalism was high. So we ended up providing an opt-out solution, but also an opt-in. So whilst we'd chosen streets and we'd chosen houses where it was suitable, if we didn't get enough planted in that suburb because people opted out, well then we allowed that in that suburb for other people in other streets to opt in. So we, you know, it traded off really and we got the trees that we needed into the space. So we ended up, for the first suburb, we got 45% acceptable. By the second suburb, it was 57%. And by the last few suburbs, 95% accepted that tree, just from our learnings around community engagement. And then those families, as I said, they've been given a pack now to be able to, after the 12 months, to maintain their own tree. To align with that at the same time, to align with that and to ensure, yes, we're putting trees on public space and on the street verge, but what can we do to encourage the community again to adopt a tree and plant on their own private property to increase canopy on, on private land? So we've just launched an Adopt a Tree Programme, which provides residents with the opportunity to adopt a tree, to take home and plant in their private space. We're piloting 200 trees which have been grown at our council nursery, native to the area. And we're targeting four suburbs at the moment that have low tree canopy and again, are vulnerable to heat. Each one of those gets an adoption pack. And we're doing a day where we'll provide information on how to care for, plant and maintain their trees into the future. Just lastly, urban heat is obviously a challenge for Penrith now and into the future. Temperatures are predicted to get hotter and we know this. To date, we've shown some examples of work that we've done. We've been leaders in this space, but you know, we can't rest on our laurels. This is an ongoing issue and we need to build... This is an ongoing issue and we need to build on the work that we've done. And, you know, to ensure that we continue to address urban heat and to build the resilience of Penrith now and into the future. And of course, as Barry said this morning, collaboration is key. We can't all do it alone, we need to collaborate with each other. And the first thing is to collaborate internally. Council's made up of numerous moving parts and departments all doing different things and maybe leading in different directions. But, you know, if urban heat is to be that shared common goal and we need to address it, then we need to collaborate internally first and then we need to collaborate with partners. So, you know, whether it's research organisations, industry professionals, doctors and community service organisations and the community itself. Because we're all at the coalface, where where the shade hits the pavement and it's down to us and to work with all levels of government to make that change. You know, to address those urban heat challenges, tackle them head on, to find the solutions that we need to put on the ground, but also to make the changes that we need to make in order to address urban heat and achieve those sustainable urban greening and cooling outcomes. Thank you.